Good morning. Welcome, everyone, to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, July 11, 2017. We begin our meeting today at 9:01 a.m. We are going to begin with the flag salute led by Supervisor Holmes.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I note that it appears that Supervisor Holmes got a haircut looking at the back of your head. Looks very nice. We're a friendly town, you know, what can I say? Whether he needs it or not.
Right after he takes a shower.
Every other Saturday. Ah, Jim, Jim. All right, so we are going to move to our consent agenda, but we will be pulling Item 18F, as in Frank, off the agenda to address more directly. Is there anything else that anyone wishes to have removed from the consent agenda?
Yes, Item 11A, just for a little bit of discussion.
Eleven, excuse me. Item 11A is Child Support Awareness Month.
Yes.
Excellent. What is the pleasure of the board for the remainder of the agenda? All right, this is a roll call vote. Duran?
Yes.
Weigant?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Euler?
Aye.
Montgomery? Yes. Let's start with Supervisor Euler's agenda item, 11A.
As agendized, I know that our board just recently received the annual report that's put together by Child Support Services that kind of highlights the work that they did in the last year. And so, in particular, I thought this would be a good opportunity to hear a little bit about the accomplishments of the department in the last year. So with that, if you wouldn't mind just telling us a little bit about what you guys have been up to and how your department, once again, was recognized within the last year for some of the work you're doing.
Thank you for the invitation. I'm Susan Dunlap, the Program Manager with the department. And we are very proud of the work that we've done over the last year. Last year, we placed eighth in the state. There are 58 counties, but 49 child support agencies due to regionalization. And we placed eighth, which is the highest ever ranking by our department. We're very proud of the work that our staff has done. We've taken a lot of time over the last couple of years to refine our training, our hiring practice, and then, obviously, our method for working our child support cases. It's resulted in us collecting over $24 million last year, and we're on target to collect over 25 this year, which is awesome considering we have a staff of only 47 people. So, we're doing very well with the department. August is Child Support Awareness Month. It's a national designation, and during the month of August, it's a collective concerted effort across the United States to bring awareness to the program and the benefits that the department offers for the people that we serve.
And, obviously, that $25 million brought in, number one, is consistent with court orders, things like that, but that's 25 million fewer dollars that somebody needs here in terms of services that we might otherwise have to provide as a county government through our other departments as well.
Correct. And this year, on this federal fiscal year, we have expanded our services to collect what we call Smith-Osler orders, which are also referred to as bonus orders for people that earn commissions and significant overtime. And in the past, that was something that our department wasn't able to enforce. It's very convoluted and complex. And so, this year, we're offering those services to the community. So, we've seen some increase in requests to enforce those types of orders as well.
Great, thank you.
I want to take the opportunity, since Supervisor Euler pulled this for discussion, to thank you all for your work. I read the report when it landed on my desk. I've actually been sharing it with our municipal advisory councils and the people attending, and the response has been just fantastic. And I will tell you that people often don't understand the complexity of what we do at Placer County and sort of the all-encompassing part we are of different parts of their lives. And recognizing that, you know, we're eighth in the state, I think people had just no idea, one, that we did what we do, but mainly that we do it so well. And so, I really wanted to pass the thanks from particularly the Squaw Valley Municipal Advisory Council. I shared both copies. I had of the report with them, and they read it over and just really wanted me to make sure that I communicated to you guys. What a great job. Excellent. Any other comments on this? I'm sorry.
Jeff Thompson, Senior ASO, and I have the privilege of supporting the department in that capacity. We just took care of the teleconferencing equipment in Tahoe, and so now we are able to do that. And it's a fantastic thing for the customers to have that up there versus coming down the hill, so.
Absolutely, absolutely. Providing services throughout the county is just critically important, particularly to the children we serve. So, any other questions or comments from any member of the board?
I'd like to move approval of 11A.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to move to Item 18F, as in Frank. Ken Graham, I believe, will be addressing this for us.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Ken Graham, with the Department of Public Works and Facilities. Today, we're asking you to approve the use of undesignated capital project reserves in the amount of approximately $727,000 for the Highway 49 sidewalk project. The project was originally funded by a combination of RDA, old RDA bond funds, an amount of about $677,000, bike and pedestrian funds in the amount of about $500,000, and then about $300,000 in regional surface transportation funds. We were notified just a month, a little over a month ago, that the bond trustee indicated they would not accept the successor agency's resolution to amend the deadline for the use of the bond proceeds from September 1, 2016, to December 31, 2017. So, they've indicated that the remaining bond funds are going to be used to basically pay down the debt service, and that is their right. And so, that's moving forward. So, at this point, we have the choice of two options. One is to amend our project description to have less work being done. Since the work's already begun, we don't recommend doing that. I think that would be spending money to get not a lot of things done. The other is to replace those lost RDA funds with another fund source. We've looked at some various fund sources, such as the traffic impact fee, and really, at this late a date, we're thinking the best alternative is to use those undesignated capital reserves. And so, with that, we're recommending that you do utilize approximately $727,000 in those undesignated capital reserves for the project. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I see no lights from anyone here on the board. Anyone in the audience have any questions on this? And I think I only see my district aide in Tahoe. Hello, Lindsey? So, I will not be calling on Tahoe. All right, Jim?
I just want to move approval.
Okay, I just did want to comment. There was an article that ran on this in the Auburn Journal last week. I did receive a number of emails from constituents who were concerned. They understood from the article that the project had been halted. My understanding is we have continued the project.
We have.
Yes.
In fact, it is being done at night, for the most part. That was a last-minute add-on by Caltrans, not allowing the work, probably good for traffic. And so, the work, a lot of that work's being done while people are sleeping.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Supervisor Holmes has made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Ken. All right, we will now move to public comments. This is the opportunity for anyone to address the board on any items not on today's agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes, since time allocated is 15 minutes. If all comments cannot be heard within the 15-minute time limit, public comment will be taken up again at the end of regular session. Please also understand that the board is not permitted to take any action on items addressed under public comment. Is there anyone here in Auburn who would like to make public comments on anything not on today's agenda? Lindsey, unless you have something in Tahoe, I'm just going to move on. Okay. This is the opportunity now for board members and the county executive to make any reports. Are there any board member reports? I see none. County Executive?
Not this morning.
Not this morning, okay. We are just at our 9:10 timed items, so we are going to move to our first timed item. This is a Health and Human Services item, the Placer County Youth Commission, the annual report. This is for fiscal year 2016-17. Twyla Abramson presenting.
Good morning, Chair Montgomery, Members of the Board, Mr. Carden, Mr. Bosch. I am actually here to do a very quick introduction of Sean Wang, who is the President of the Placer County Youth Commission, and Rahul Bervasetti, who will be delivering the annual report presentation. I think you will be very impressed by the amount of work and the quality of the work that this commission has been doing. So, I'll turn it over to them.
Good morning. Welcome.
Good morning. All right, I want to take it off. To start off the year, Placer County Youth Commissioner members attend-
I'm sorry, would you introduce yourself?
Oh, yeah. I'm Rahul Bervasetti. I go to Granite Bay High School as a rising senior.
Thank you.
To start off the year, the Placer County Youth Commission attended a conference in Anaheim sponsored by Friday Night Live. And later throughout the year, we attended a similar conference, though hosted by CADCA in Washington, DC. Both conferences focused on prevention of alcohol and drugs, which aligned perfectly with our goal of the social health ordinance and reducing alcohol and drugs within the Placer County-
County. Another, so, I'm Sean. I recently just graduated. Another opportunity we had was the display of our hexagons, each of which was personalized by a commissioner. The Hexagon Project was a display of the individuality of each commissioner, as well as a declaration of what they stood for as effectors of change. It began last term, but this year, we were able to take, mount, and display these hexagons right in the hallway of this very building, over there, if you've seen it, walking around. A new subcommittee was also created, the Environmental Subcommittee, focusing on reducing pollution and environmental waste. One teacher actually came up to us, asking to help sponsor a letter to the California Board of Education. That teacher, Beth Dixon, helped form a letter in order to send to the Board of Education, focusing on including local environmental policies within schools' curriculums to help the student engage not only on local policies, but national policies as well. So, the first of our major projects that we embarked on this year as a commission was assisting Natalie Polley and the Auburn Hip-Hop Congress in holding the Stand Up, Get Down Arts Exhibition and Dance Event. The idea for this event was conceived as an opportunity to provide a safe, controlled space for youth from disadvantaged neighborhoods to spend an evening of art and music, dancing, company, and fun. Supplied with art from youth around Placer County and attended by many distinguished figures in the local music scene, the event was a display of the ability for teens to enjoy themselves without the presence of alcohol or drugs, which might otherwise put them at risk. Much in the spirit of our goals as a commission, the event became a demonstration of the mutual support and camaraderie of teens of Placer County and the responsibility and discipline of staying clean, in tandem with the thrill-seeking and frivolity that are the hallmarks of youth. Another monumental project that we took this year was the Mental Health Awareness Gallery. So, the idea was brought to the commission originally from the convention in Anaheim. It was originally implemented by the FNL Chapter in San Luis Obispo, and it was adapted by the Youth Commission, spearheaded by Commissioner and Vice President Catherine Sobchak. We began by contacting the Roseville City School District and set up an entire week in which a gallery would be set up and on display and open for middle schoolers to read and explore. In addition to the displays, which gave useful information on mental illnesses that educated middle schoolers on mental health, there were PSAs that were shown at each of the four middle schools with information about their counselors. There were activities aimed at reducing the stigma of mental health issues, and there were resources, such as brochures from the Placer County Network of Care, that were available for all students. And the week culminated with a parent night, at which representatives from the National Alliance on Mental Illness, NAMI, spoke and helped to teach opening up valuable lines of communication between parents and their children. The success of the week was indicative of the interest that the Youth Commission, as well as the community as a whole, the youth of the community as a whole, have in reducing stigma around mental health and promoting awareness of these issues so that our peers who may be struggling may get the help that they need. To end the year, we hosted our third annual Placer County Youth Impact Awards, focused on presenting special youth who have done something amazing throughout the community within the year. With awards like overcoming adversity to apply talents and knowledge, our awardees were so special, ranging from engineering to reducing mental health within their communities. The Youth Impact Awards, once again, was such a special event, with keynotes such as your very own Jim Holmes, Natalie Polley of the Auburn Hip-Hop Congress, all tied together with a beautiful and delicious chocolate cake. All in all, it represented the Placer County beautifully. It showed who we are, a great group of people, ready to promote change, once again, for our third year in a row. And a couple of things that are not on this presentation. Oh, there's Jim Holmes right there.
Was he rapping?
He was.
He looks like he was rapping.
He laid down some bars. It was amazing. So, first of all, just a quick, quick thing, just last night, in the very city of Auburn, the first reading of the Social Host Ordinance for the city was delivered by Chief Roughcorn in the Auburn City Council meeting last night, and they could not be more ecstatic about it. And we're very excited about that as well. And secondly, we wanted to give a quick thank you to our advisor this year, Cory Anonio, who has valiantly taken up the mantle, as this is his first year, and he's done a great job, and we could not be more appreciative of his work. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments from any member of the board? Supervisor Holmes?
Sean, I want to thank you for the immense leadership you've taken this year, and you too, as a young man, I can't pronounce your name. You know, whenever I hear a presentation from you or attend the meetings, I get a little teary-eyed, because of the immense amount of work that you've been doing, that you've taken up to do on your own. And I just appreciate it so much, and I will always consider, when my career is over, that forming the Placer County Youth Commission was the best thing I've ever done. And, you know, we say, and I've said this before, you are the leaders of the future, but I take exception to that, because you are the young leaders today that are leading your generation into the future. So, keep it up. Sean, where are you heading off to? School?
I'm going to be down south of California, UCLA.
Oh, good, good.
Oh, well, thank God it's not USC.
And are you, did you graduate? Or you-
No, I'll be a senior next year.
Oh, good, good. So, see more good things at the Youth Commission from you. All right. Thank you so much for your leadership and what you've done with the Youth Commission. You really exceeded my expectations beyond belief, so thank you very much.
Yeah, I'd like to thank both you gentlemen. Mayor Spockly spoke very highly of the presentation last night, this morning, at Medler's, and was indeed very excited about the proposal brought forth to the City Council, so-
Great.
-got some great positive feedback on that. I'd also like to thank your advisor for stepping up and, you know, taking on this really critical role. But I really want to do a huge shout-out to Supervisor Holmes, because this is truly his brainchild. And without his incentive, without his vision, and without his really kind of making this move forward, we would not have the incredible outcomes that we're seeing from the Placer County Youth Commission. So, my thanks to all of you, but particularly to Supervisor Holmes.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. I see no other questions or comments from the board. Anyone in the audience have any question or comments on this that they would like to engage in? All right, see none? Thank you very much, gentlemen. Much appreciated. Okay, we are going to move to our 9:20 timed item. This is a Public Works and Facilities item relating to the South Placer Wastewater Authority and a regional sewer connection fee increase. Kevin Bell presenting.
Good morning, Chair Montgomery, Members of your board. I'm Kevin Bell, the Environmental Engineering Program Manager in the Department of Public Works and Facilities. I'm here this morning to request your board hold a public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending Section 1312350 of the Placer County Code to increase sewer connection fees for sewer maintenance districts 2 and 3, which are the Granite Bay and Horseshoe Bar areas, and county service area 28, Zones 2A3, which is Sunset, and 173, which is Dry Creek, and make a finding pursuant to Section 21080B8 of the Public Resources Code that the connection fees are derived directly from the cost of providing service and are therefore exempt from environmental review. Under the county's agreement with the South Placer Wastewater Authority, wastewater is collected in the reference sewer service areas and conveyed to Roseville for treatment. The agreement requires payment of a regional connection fee to fund expansions of the wastewater treatment plants, and it includes an annual inflator based on the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index. The regional fee adjustment for this year took effect on July 1. The current fee is seven, the current regional fee is $7,457 per equivalent dwelling unit, and it is set to increase 2.37% based on the NR Construction Cost Index to $7,634 per equivalent dwelling unit, with a total connection fee of $9,102 when the local component of the connection fee is added. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions your board has.
Kevin, thank you. I see no questions from any member of the board. Is there any member of the public who would like to ask a question or comment on this? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of the board? Oh, I'm sorry, this is a public hearing. Let me open the public hearing. Any member of the public would like to comment on this? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Thank you. I should have highlighted that on my agenda, I apologize. Pleasure of the board?
Absolutely.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And I'm assuming that that included making the finding, just so Jerry doesn't have to ask, making the finding pursuant to Section 21080B8 of the Public Resource Code.
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. Motion passes. Thank you very much. I knew Jerry would ask if I didn't say something. All right, we're now going to move to a department's item. This is a county executive item, Fire Protection and Emergency Medical Services, Morgan Creek Residential Parcel Map. I will be conducting a public hearing. We are looking for John McElhany. Here he comes, making an appearance.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board Members. Five A.
Yes.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Today, this action requests that your board conduct a public hearing, consider all protests, tabulate ballots, and adopt a resolution imposing a charge to fund fire protection and emergency medical services for all parcels that are or will be a part of the Morgan Creek Residential Parcel Map. By way of background, the State of California County Service Area Law, Government Code 25210-1, creates a means of providing expanded service levels in areas where residents are willing to pay for the extra service. Zones of benefit are created within a CSA, and unincorporated Placer County is designated CSA 28, to fill the services funding gap between general county services and special services. Zone of Benefit 165, Dry Creek Fire, covers approximately 19,800 acres in the southwest corner of the county and was established in September of 2001, when its residents voted to dissolve the Old Dry Creek Fire. Placer County subsequently assumed responsibility for providing fire protection and emergency medical services within Zone of Benefit 165, and it is within that zone that the Morgan Creek Residential Parcel Map is located. The Morgan Creek Residential Parcel Map, a portion of APN 023240066, is located at the intersection of Morgan Creek Lane and St. Julian Way, and is tentatively approved for seven residential units on 1.54 acres. Pursuant to Proposition 218, the owner of record of the existing properties of the Morgan Creek Residential Parcel Map has approved, by way of this ballot, an annual charge of $210.93 per parcel and/or dwelling unit beginning in fiscal year 2017-18. Subject to any annual cost of living adjustment for existing parcels and each new parcel or and/or dwelling unit created in these areas as final maps are recorded. In lieu of mailed notice of this hearing, Morgan Creek LLC has executed a waiver of notice. Your board is required to conduct a public hearing, to consider all protests, and tabulate the ballots, and must also adopt a resolution to impose the parcel dwelling unit charge. In terms of an environmental clearance, this is an, this is, this action is an administrative action required pursuant to the conditions of approval from this, for this subdivision. As such, it is not a separate project and is not subject to further environmental review. In terms of fiscal aspect, this charge will be levying on each existing parcel dwelling unit and on each new parcel created by each new final map commencing in FY 2017-18. The ballot executed by the property owner provides for an annual cost of living increase for the county service area charge based on the percent change in the Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers for the San Francisco, Oakland, San Jose metropolitan area, which, by the way, this shall not exceed 5% in any one year. And again, the base charge is $210.93 per unit. So, with that, I'll request a public hearing, ma'am.
Okay, we'll begin with questions or comments from the board. Supervisor Duran?
Yeah, I just want to clarify. Christina and I were out at the Homeowners Association a couple of weeks back. Things are really good out there, and I just want to make sure that the homeowners or anybody listening understands that this does not affect existing residences out there. It just affects parcel one. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, it affects parcel one and the potential, if they split in the future.
If they split, correct, okay. Yeah, that's it.
All right, I will open the public hearing, and we will take any questions, comments, or protests at this time. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. We are being asked to have the tabulated ballots reported to us.
One ballot was received, and the vote was yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're now being asked to adopt a resolution imposing said charge. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
All right, not being quite to our 9:30 timed item, we're going to move to Health and Human Services, Item 6A, Placer County Mental Health Services Act Expenditure Plan for 2017 through 2020. Amy Ellis presenting.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chairperson and Board Members. I'm Amy Ellis with the Adult System of Care. This morning, I am bringing forward with you an action item to adopt the Placer County Mental Health Services Act Services and Expenditure Plan for years 2017 through 2020. Placer County has received funding since 2005 for Mental Health Services Act funds, which is state funding. We have implemented services as mandated and regulated by the state. These expenditure plans are created by community and county participants of the Campaign for Community Wellness Steering Committee. We are required to create a plan every three years to discuss how we're spending our plans, and we do annual updates as well. The funding expands intensive mental health services, crisis services, housing projects, staff and provider development, facility and technology improvements, prevention and early intervention, and innovation programs. Some examples of what's included in the plan include our three full-service partnerships that we have here in Placer County that have decreased psychiatric hospitalizations by 24%, incarcerations by 26%, and they've housed 54% of all who have enrolled in their FSPs. They've also funded programs that provide outreach to individuals who have never received services in the past and who have struggles making their way to access services on their own. So, this improves their access, gets needed services into the community for folks who wouldn't otherwise be able to come in. And lastly, well, there's more in the plan, but another thing to highlight is our housing development projects. There's two in Auburn and two new projects in Roseville, which will, if able to go forward as planned, will offer 28 new units to house residents with mental illness. So, community input, data review, and evaluation of programs are taken into account when developing these plans, and when the yearly updates to the plans occur, we look and see how things are performing. No county general funds are required, and the entire plan is on file with the Clerk of the Board, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
All right, I'll start with the board. Any questions from any member of the board? I see none. Any questions or comments from any member of the audience? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. It being 9:30, I'm going to split the HHS items and move to our 9:30 timed item. This is an auditor's item. This is the annual report from the Placer- This is the annual report from the Placer County Audit Committee. Wayne Nader presenting. Welcome, Wayne.
Thank you, Chair Montgomery. Supervisors David and Jerry, it's good to be before you this morning again, Wayne Nader, and I've been on the committee now, I think this is the ninth year that I've come before you to submit a report. And I wanted to point out first, I appreciate that Andy Sisk, Auditor and Controller and Assistant Auditor and Controller Nicole Howard is here as well, so in case you have questions that I can't answer, I can always defer to them. One thing that I've noticed over the nine years is that when I came in, it wasn't that there was issues, a multitude of issues, but over the years, I've seen a progression, certainly improvement, and I think you will notice it as well. Let me back up, I forgot, I have the honor of serving on this committee with Supervisors Durant at home, so I appreciate their involvement in this as well. But I've seen a progression, and I think you can see this too. One of the things that I've noticed is the, the single audit report is something that I think is rather, it's challenging just because those are grants that these various agencies have to comply with, and those are always rather challenging, you know, the extent of reporting is always kind of changing, it's kind of a moving environment for them. And so, this year, there were only two comments that came up in the single audit report, which is pretty incredible to me that, that we're getting that kind of level of reporting done out now. And I really attributed that to the audit department doing a better, doing, I won't say a better job, but I mean, they're being very diligent about it, but they're getting out and making, doing awareness, doing education to the various departments, because I think also what we've seen is less, when they're doing their internal audits, the reports that are coming back are always in compliance, we're seeing, not seeing very many where there's issues, and when there are issues, they're minor issues. So, I think that speaks very well of how the departments are actually implementing the policies and procedures, as well as, I believe, again, the interface that the auditor and their staff play in making sure that everybody is staying up with what those requirements are. So, hopefully, you've had a chance to take a look at the reports, only a couple of pages. I know that auditing is sort of a mundane sort of thing, I mean Supervisor Wygant can appreciate it as a CPA, but, but it is a critical function, and I believe that it helps to keep things to the highest level of integrity as we make sure that people are being accountable, responsible, as they do their jobs each day. The couple of things that I wanted to highlight in that report was, first of all, something that is different in this report that we addressed this past year was the whistleblower program that you folks have approved, and that is now up and running, and you will be getting reports on that, but they informed me yesterday that there have been three calls that have come in, and they're doing some investigative work, initial investigative work on that now. So, it's good to see that it's actually functioning, that people are paying attention and looking for ways that maybe things can actually be better out there. The other thing that I wanted to bring up was the TOT. That's been a big issue for us as we've looked at it over this last year, the transit occupancy tax. And, you know, obviously, we have a lot of that going on in Placer County, particularly up in the Tahoe region, and the, the growth of Airbnb and, let's see, VRBO and HomeAway and all of these websites that you can go to have made it a challenge to go out and find those, but I think you may be aware that the county is engaged, an outside firm, to kind of track these and to try to make people aware of the fact that they need to be collecting those even on their individual homes out there. So, one thing I wanted, since we're, obviously being very attentive to the TOT issue, there have been results that have been very positive for the effort out there. Just as an example, in 2014, they collected $57,415 of monies that should have been forwarded to Placer County, and in addition, there was $26,665 in penalties. So, the dollars are fairly significant, so, and it's, most of the time, it's just education. People are not aware, they're not keeping appropriate records and not passing it on, but it is something that is, is important for us to keep track of, because, again, it's a very growing issue in Placer County. But I'm glad to answer any questions, I'm sure Andy and Nicole are there as well if you have any on the report.
Any questions from any member of the board on the report? Supervisor Holmes?
I don't have a question, just a comment. Thank you, Wayne, for being Chair. You're, we always elect you Chair, that's the most important thing we do. But I also want to thank Andy and Nicole for keeping us on track and giving us the information that we need. It really gives, as an elected official, it gives me a sense of comfort that, to knowing that we're keeping an eye on all our departments and there's no malfeasance or anything going on. And I think staff has really done a good job going out to the departments and helping them understand the process, and that's gone a long way for, for people to be, to be working together, so. Thanks, Kevin.
Yeah, no, I want to thank Wayne for, for his participation, you know, very seldom do you get someone who's enthusiastic about, about audits and making sure that, you know, the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. And, you know, if people don't understand, it can be a pain, but, but this is where, you know, everything starts and finishes with regards to how your books and your fiscal policies and procedures are. You know, outside of this, I, I run a couple of forensic accountants, and we do it for specific clients, and, you know, I'm very proud to have worked with government agencies and actually put people in jail for doing some pretty bad things to organizations. So, you know, it's, it's good to see that our fiscal stance and our fiscal policies have gotten better, you know, with things like cafeteria, with things like credit cards and, and gift cards and those kinds of things, the accounting for those can get real sloppy real quick, but we've, we've addressed those issues, and, and I'm happy to see those things move positively forward.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks, Jack. Yes, Jim, appreciate it.
Yeah, I'd really like to thank you for your service on this as well, Wayne. It's not probably the most glamorous committee to serve on, but it's a really, really important one for the county, and getting such a great report honestly speaks volumes about the incredible work that our auditor's office does, because without good, strong internal controls, we are not going to get this kind of a report from an external review. And the outreach work that you guys have done to other departments to just explain the minutia, I mean, I think very often what happens is people just don't even understand the context of how they're supposed to be operating, and your efforts to reach out to other departments and educate them show so clearly in the results of this report. So, Nicole, Andy, thank you both so much for your work on this. Please pass my thanks along to everybody who works in the auditor's department. I did want to touch very briefly on the TOT issue as well, and just mention that, yeah, host compliance, who this board entered into a contract with to go out and look at those VRBOs and Airbnbs and the other vacation rentals, has been getting really good response in sending notices out to folks saying, hey, were you aware? Again, probably 99% of the people weren't even aware that they were subject to our TOT regulation. So again, it's that education piece that's absolutely just so important. And then last but not least, delighted to hear that we've had three reports under the whistleblower program. When we implemented that, on one hand, we hoped that we would never get any, but on the other hand, we said, we need to be fully transparent and make sure that where there are problems, people have a sense of comfort in reporting them, and knowing that they're going to be taken seriously, they're going to be investigated, and if there are problems, and God willing, there aren't in any of those three, they're dealt with. And so, it's not often that, you know, I get an audit report and I'm like, this is just fabulous, but it's fabulous, and I really want to thank everyone who's been involved.
Thank you, Jennifer. If you'll indulge me, just one more moment, I forgot something that I should mention, that in addition to, obviously, their audit work, the Audit Controller Department has, and I believe Andy's even kind of run it, is the outside audits for the Placer County Fair and also Newcastle Fire, which is helping, again, to educate them to get more accountable about what they're doing. And so, I really appreciate the work that they've done there to sort through what was some pretty good messes. So, that's something else they're doing. Also, want to thank the CEO's office, because over the years, as we've gone through the challenges on staffing, they've been very supportive of making sure that the audit department is fully staffed, so that we've been able to keep on top of the issues that are out there as well. So, thank you for that.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't believe we have to take any action on this, or do we, Jerry? I don't think so. It was just a report. Excellent, all right, thank you so much, appreciate the report. Okay, we are going to move to Item 6B, Placer County Mental Health Services Act Services Contracts with Network Providers. Twila Abramson presenting.
So, good morning again, and before our auditor gave that wonderful committee report, you had heard from Amy Ellis about our Mental Health Services Expenditure Plan Report, which you just approved. So what I am here today is doing the companion item and presenting that on behalf of both ASOC and CSOC, and these are the associated contracts. So, as Amy had said, the Campaign for Community Wellness, which is the CCW, which functions as Placer County's Required MHSA Steering Committee and Approval Committee, includes service recipients, community-based providers from many sectors, and various county agencies. The CCW has overseen and reviewed the development of the original extensive request for proposals, which was number 10351 in 2014, and has received periodic updates on outcomes since that time. Based on the positive client assistance and outcomes achieved since the contracts were awarded in 2014, and based on the limited pool of agencies in the area that provide mental health services, the CCW is recommending renewals for the majority of the agreements for 2017 through 2020. Procurement Services also concurs with this recommendation. So, in your board memo, there were 19 contracts presented in Attachment A with descriptions of the services and proposed funding awards to each contractor. I also brought up a visual. This is the Services and Expenditures Plan, which includes the outcomes. This is for the last, going forward for 2017 through 2020, so it'll have a proposed evaluation opportunities. And then we also have, of course, another plan, because we do this on an annual basis on what the prior outcomes were and everything that Amy had talked about in terms of some of the outcomes that we had with reduced psychiatric hospitalizations, reduced incarcerations and whatnot. So, if you'd like some light reading, if you really don't want to do the auditing, this is also very entertaining. But, moving on to action, what we are requesting your board take the following action, is approve the 19 contracts identified in Attachment 1 to provide MHSA services for two- or three-year terms commencing July 1st, 2017, in an aggregate amount not to exceed $29,407,599, and this has $603,717 net county cost. And authorize the Director of Health and Human Services to execute the agreements and to sign subsequent amendments not to exceed 10% of each contract amount or $100,000, whichever is less, with risk management and county council concurrence. Contract expenditures of $9,965,130 are included in the department's fiscal year 2017-18 proposed budget, funded with 98% federal and state revenues of $9,763,900, and 2% required county general fund match of $201,239. Contract expenditures of similar amounts, $9,782,632, will be included in the department's fiscal year 2018-19 requested budget, and expenditures of $9,659,828 will be included in the department's fiscal year 2019-2020 requested budget. The same funded percentages of 98% with 2% county fund match will be used for fiscal year 2017-18 and will be used for the other two years. So, we thank you for your consideration, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Supervisor Duran?
Yeah, thank you, Twila, for bringing this forward. Probably haven't gone over this in a while, so it's probably a good thing to go over it again every once in a while, but how does the department manage these, I mean, it's $29 million, not to crack here, how do you separate that up and, and hold the folks accountable at the different levels? Obviously, you know, there's federal money involved here, state money involved here, so there's reporting there. With our piece of it, how do you manage it within the department?
So, that's an excellent question. It's a very complicated process.
Can you just give us the quick and dirty?
Absolutely. So, we have contract monitors. So, the contract monitors actually meet with each of the contractors on either a monthly or quarterly basis. We also have an evaluation committee that looks at outcomes as they are going along. We look at those also on either a monthly or a quarterly basis, because sometimes some outcomes take a little bit longer to mature, if you will. We also check to see that we're drawing down the Medi-Cal dollars that we need to within each of the contracts to make sure we're maximizing the other funding streams that we have. So, quick and dirty, that's how we do it. It's, again, it's a pretty complicated process, because it's a lot of money.
Sure, okay, all right. Thank you very much.
I see no other questions or comments, so what's the pleasure of the board? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, it being 9:47, we are going to move to our 9:45 timed item. Sorry, Rob. And that is, let me get back to the correct page here, county executive item, this is the Greater Sacramento Area Economic Council Presentation and Annual Contract. Sherry Conway and John Kruger.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Sherry Conway with the Office of Economic Development. I am here today to provide your board with an annual update on the initiatives and accomplishments of one of our key partner organizations, the Greater Sacramento Economic Council, otherwise known as GSAC. GSAC is a one of its, first of its kind organization here in California, bringing together over 35 corporate CEOs in 19 communities, including Placer County, in an economic partnership dedicated to building the Sacramento region into the California Innovation Corridor. For fiscal year 2016 and '17, GSAC successfully accomplished its scope of work with funding provided by Placer County. The thrust of the work this past year involved improving our competitiveness in the region through regional branding, enhancing the business climate, addressing regional infrastructure needs, partnering with our educational institutions on workforce development, and recruitment of talent. And so with that, I'm delighted to present to your board today Mr. John Kruger, who is the Executive Vice President of GSAC.
Welcome, John.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board, county staff, appreciate the opportunity to be here today. It's a great partnership, and as an Eldorado County resident, I do want to say this is my shortest commute of probably the month, because I get to come here today, and not only do I love Placer County, but I love, love the drive instead of going to downtown. But I do want to take some time, and I have four hours of materials and nine and a half minutes to cover it in, and so, but what I want to do is just kind of encourage questions about what we're doing and what we've achieved last year. Sherry kind of touched on the higher points of what the organization did last year. We did meet some of our goals, and, and we just had a question on the last item about kind of how do we track and how do we put metrics around success? So we have metrics for every single one of our divisions around how do we do research and strategy, what kind of money do we spend, what kind of data do we make available to our partners, because that is something that we do. We have almost a $90,000 annual spend on research and strategy, data and analytics platforms that are available to all of our communities, so we spend time often with our community partners, looking at that data, could be anything from demographics data to, to housing, to economic impacts of a particular company, or, or of a project, or an incentive package, so we do a lot of those kinds of things. We also track our jobs. Last year, we were about 150 jobs over our stated goal for the year, so we were about 124%. We're 150% of our goal, 148% of our goal of our, on our prospects. So when we talk about net new companies that we've started talking to, to say, you should consider a Greater Sacramento six-county region location for your, for your business expansion or relocation, we had 88 of those last year alone. We, our target was in the low 70s, and we were about 148% of our goal. So we're very excited to kind of run through this year, and really, it's our, it's our partnership. We have a really phenomenal set of six counties, all six counties in the region are partners of ours, as well as 13 of the incorporated communities. So look forward to another year of success, which we increase by 14.7% per year, so we have every five years a doubling of our goals. So when we talk about the initial year's job goals, some of those were, hey, 900,000, doesn't sound like a lot of jobs, when we're going to add 12,000, 15,000. lot of jobs," when we're going to add twelve, fifteen thousand to the entire market. The idea is a differential in jobs. We look at our average wages. We have goals around what kinds of jobs we bring, what industries we're trying to attract. So, this next year will go another fourteen point seven percent with just over a thousand fifty-eight jobs is our goal this year. So, we hope to bring that many jobs in this next fiscal year. And that included a company that located to Roseville in Placer County. So, we have a lot of Placer County residents that will be directly impacted with jobs, and secondary and tertiary impacts, and sales tax, and TOT dollars, that kind of stuff. So, it was an exciting year. It was a good year, and I know that this next year will be better. So, what I have, and I know that we were able to provide you a kind of a year-end review, which is a nice document. It's kind of a pictorial review of what the year looked like. And I apologize, I did not take better pictures at the beginning of the year, when the Chair of the Board of Supervisors, Supervisor Montgomery, was able to kick off an event that we helped host in Tahoe in March of this last year, with about fifteen to twenty executives in the autonomous vehicle space, electric vehicle space, which is a pretty exciting event. And part of what we're trying to do is really coalesce people's understanding in the Bay Area and the rest of the world of, what is the region? When I talk about Greater Sacramento. And just as an aside, I have never worked in an environment, neither in Arizona nor here in California, where the unfortunate, the region is known as the name of the largest city in the Six-County Region, which makes it challenging, the first series of questions, "Well, you're Greater Sacramento. It's in the name. How come it's not Greater Placer? How come I don't have Greater Galt on your list of what your regional title was in your name?" But, what we try to do is, what do I mean when I say in the Bay Area, or in Chicago, or New York, or Boston, when I take these sales trips, to try to convince companies and their consultants, they should consider Sacramento? It is Placer. It is all the way to North Basin. It is all the way to the state line. It is this diversity of a downtown urban core with a new arena, with an NBA team, with hopefully an MLS team to be announced either later this summer, early fall, with all of this, and all of the communities in between. And that could be extremely rural. If you want acreage and farming, or you want animals, you want anything you want to have. And that's what makes the diversity of this economy really exciting for us to sell, as we sell this region, is I have something for everybody. And nicely enough, with transportation measures passing, and being able to develop and grow our transportation corridor, which is one of our key drivers of competitiveness, we're actually able to say, "You can have a business almost anywhere in this community, and have residents and employees anywhere else, and have any kind of lifestyle they want. You can have employees that live in the downtown core, and you can have employees that live on acreage and anywhere in between." Really, that's what we're gunning for. So, I'll go over some time, but hopefully, in the few minutes that I have left, answer any questions either at the end of the presentation, or during. But, these are our five main driving categories of when I say, "Work on the economy." When I say, "Improving our region," these are the things we're really looking at. It's regional brand. When I first moved here two and a half years ago and started going into the Bay Area, and I've told this story before, I wish I had been there. And if you've met Barry Broom, you've probably wished you'd been there to see it as well. He met a venture capitalist from Sand Hill, which is like eighty percent of the world's venture capital financing seems to sit in this one kind of throne area in Silicon Valley. But, he met a gentleman, he presented him with his card, and he said, "You know, I'm Barry Broom. I'm in Sacramento. I'm running a regional economic development group." And he handed him his card. The gentleman crossed his arms, leaned over on the tips of his toes, looked at Barry, looked at the card, looked at Barry, and said, "I don't, Sacramento, I don't think I'm going to be needing that card." That was the original perception, and that was the original reception we were having when we went down there, and we started talking about the Six-County Region. So, regional brand is an extremely important thing for us to try to develop in an area that creates more intellectual property, and then stimulates more job growth, that right now, the trend is, has to immediately leave based on costs, based on finding talent, based on the ability to extend your runway. And I'll talk a little bit about that as a marketing campaign. But, regional band, business climate, infrastructure development, workforce development, and advanced cluster development are things that are really driving us from a program development side. The regional brand, you know, this is what we're kind of looking on next year, and I know it's almost impossible to see, but that weird-looking Scrabble board up in that, up in the top corner of that PowerPoint slide, is an actual program we use to track ongoing marketing efforts. You can click on every single one of those periodic table-type squares to understand who we're trying to reach, where we're trying to reach them, what our perception change we're trying to drive. From a venture capital, "I don't think I'm going to need your card," to Sacramento, "A lot of stuff is happening there. I've heard. I'd love your card, and I want to have that." And in the last two years, we've seen that start to shift. So, that is one of our ultimate goals, is to walk into an environment where they're funding the majority of the new spin-outs and the new startups in the United States, and saying, "I like Sacramento. I would love to have your card." And we're seeing that happen. This is one of the things that we're doing, and I love this. I actually had to ask my marketing guy, "What in the world does micromoment digital strategy mean? And intent-driven moments of decision-making and preference shaping, precision targeting to deliver messaging at the right moment?" Really, that means my ads are in the right place at the right time. I don't put video content ads at two o'clock in the afternoon, because nobody is sitting there looking at their BuzzFeed on news clips. They're working. So, what we do, and this is a picture of someone at a gym early in the morning, is four o'clock in the morning until 7:30 in the morning, my ads hit things like TechCrunch. My ads hit things like the Sacramento Business Times. They hit in a timeframe where we know the people we're targeting are actually going to be on their phones and looking at video content and ads, or between six o'clock and nine o'clock in the evening, when they're looking at their news feeds. The other place is, where do we target this? These are geographically targeted by IP address. So, if you're attending a TechCrunch conference, which there are some coming up, and you're in the geographic area, every time you open it up, if you're someone on an IP address that says you're right by that TechCrunch, you get one of our advertising videos. We've had some great immediate responses to some of this, but being in the right place at the right time has had about fifteen different project leads that I think we're qualifying right now. We might get a couple that are actual projects that would like to consider the market. So, we're very excited about our marketing plan. We also used a company called Edelman. So, in addition to the funding that we received, we, and along with the City of Sacramento, spearheaded all of our communities, putting money into an Edelman contract, which gets national press. They've already had a Bloomberg article. We've already had an SF Gate article, a Washington Post article, a Wall Street Journal article, in just the four months that we've been working with them to do this national media outreach campaign. So, we've had some good success there. We'll consider it. I'm not sure what that picture is. It looks like two nuclear reactors that are exploding.
Melting down.
I know. It's terrible. I don't know what that is. So, I'm going to have to change that one. I saw that one again yesterday, and I think it's supposed to be changing things that are negative. What we do is, we analyze our market. The bad things go into a business climate that go into competitiveness. How do we fix these? What are my graduation rates at the local universities, and what are we going to do about it? How do we keep our kids in place? What are we going to do about these negative perceptions? How are we going to do this branding? What are we going to do around a jobs bill? How are we going to develop a statewide economic development plan for California? When there are the good things, when I do my research and my analytics, and I find out really great things, like we're seventh or eighth in the nation for number of STEM degrees within our bachelor's attainment. So, when you're saying, "Come and see our workforce," we have some of the best STEM-related degrees within our bachelor's degrees workforce. So, that goes into this marketing brand campaign. Good things go into the marketing brand campaign. Bad things go into, "How are we going to fix them?" And we do that a lot with our monthly efforts with Sherry Conway and the economic development teams of all nineteen of our jurisdictional partners, and then on the board level with the competitiveness group. And we work on the workforce development. Talent's one of the biggest issues. That's why they pay what they pay in terms of real estate in San Francisco, because they know they can find the talent. That's becoming harder and harder. Almost twenty to twenty-five percent of all of the applicants for technology-based or related jobs here in Sacramento region are coming out of the Bay Area. And they're coming out of the Bay Area at a twenty to thirty percent reduction in their wages, because they know they'll have a better quality of life, an actual more disposable income in their pocket, at the cost of living here in the Six-County Region than they would if they stayed in the Bay Area. So, we're looking at considerable workforce. These are things we'll be focusing on this year: developing a true accelerator platform, a university-led economic model, FDI, which is Foreign Direct Investment, companies that are looking to get into the United States and spending money here to do so, and what are the new emerging technologies that'll be creating the businesses of the next twenty-five years, so that our young gentlemen here in high school, and in the youth group you created, have a place in an industry here in the Six-County Region to have jobs, and stay here and be profitable. So, how we're doing that, what we're calling some of this, the employment centers, is crucial. So, the Northern California High-Tech Manufacturing Corridor, University Research Park, we really don't have a great way to capitalize on all the intellectual property. UC Davis actually has more research output than Cal, and I don't think many people realize that. And that's partly because commercializing that and getting that into the public knowledge and creating companies out of it is not the specialty of UC Davis at this point. But, we're working with them, and they're working on changing some of that. And then, creating corporate settings. Where are we going to put this? And we know, working with our partners in Placer County, that we have some really rich, long-term potential for large corporate campuses to happen in Placer County. So, that is something that we're working on with Supervisor Euler. Where are we going to put that? What does that look like? How's this acreage develop? What kind of infrastructure is there? So, we're very excited for the potential. And these are kind of our moving mantras that drive the organization. It's data, not politics. You know, we're really politics agnostic. If I see a data point that says it's a bad thing and needs to get fixed, this is what we need to do as a community to fix this. It's data, not politics. We're driving the conversation around jobs. When we talk about spending these monies, what is the impact on jobs in our Six-County region? I don't really feel like people were asking that. We're asking that question. We're driving the conversation around, what does this do to impact jobs? What's the job engine elevating the discussion, marketing nationally, building the toolkit on incentives? We're working with a couple of communities right now on analyzing if they had a large-scale project, and it was going to land in their community, what would a legal incentive package actually look like, and what would be the ramifications to both the city and the company? So, we're doing that analysis right now, continuing to building our brand, and, you know, correct what has become a delivery system that the rest of the world looks at as unforgivable. Too long, too expensive. I'm not going to California. That's impact fees. That's permitting times. That's permitting processes. So, we'll be creating dashboards to figure out, you know, kind of what are we going to do to address. So, thank you for indulging me. I know I took a little bit more time, but as I said, I had days and days of time. I would love to spend hours and hours covering this. It's my passion, my life's work, and I appreciate all of the partnership I have with the County of Placer and all my other community partners.
Thank you, John. Let me see if there's any questions or comments from any member of the board. I don't see any. I did want to make a few comments. Myself really enjoyed the autonomous vehicle event. That was just so fascinating, and it was such a blessing to be able to sit down with the incredible amount of brain power that was in that room.
Humbling.
Really humbling, honestly. And I was particularly humbled, because my husband actually was the star of the show.
He was.
It was terrible weather. It was the winter, so it was snowing. And there were a number of folks who had a really difficult time getting there. And so, the conversation evolved to, "How do autonomous cars deal with snow?" You know, when they're following things like lines on roads, and it's covered in snow, how do they identify those things? But, it then morphed into a conversation around, "How do you chain a self-driving car?" And my husband is a firefighter, as most of you know, and they have what are called self-chaining vehicles, that are just a set of wheels that through, a set of chains that through, I believe, centrifugal, not centrifugal, force, wrap around the tires as you drive. And so, everyone, all these super brainy people were like, "Tell us about this, Mr. Gomez." And, I mean, I was like, "Okay, I'm just going to sit here and let my husband be the star." But, that was just such a great example of some of the really innovative thinkers that you're bringing to the region. And I want to thank you not just for that. That was fascinating, and I adored every moment of it, but for the work that you're doing. The one concern, I'm going to say, that I have around a lot of the work that we're doing, both here at the county and more regionally, is bringing in these higher-wage jobs, critically important. But, we're struggling with housing, and how people who are not earning those higher wages can continue to live and be, you know, successful members of our community.
Sure.
Is that something that you're thinking of when you're moving through some of the stuff you presented today?
Yeah. So, I'll address it in two ways. One, there are targeted industries that we work with, and we'll use that term, targeted industries. And really, we picked some of those targeted industries, the majority of them, because of the potential for ongoing job growth within the region as opposed to on a mature decline industry. You know, there are still regions around the United States that are in a high-tech, attract semiconductors mode, which, you know, a lot like, they say, in Silicon Valley, there is no more silica in Silicon Valley.
Yeah.
There hasn't been for a long time. But, the idea that attracting a mature industry that might be able to have a thousand jobs now, but only five hundred, five years from now, is the opposite of what we're trying to do. We're looking at industries that will be, you know, five hundred jobs now, or ten jobs now, realistically. Some of these newer autonomous vehicle companies are five and six people. Their technology being developed in Ireland, and implemented in San Jose in an intersection right now. I mean, those are small, but will be five hundred to a thousand in five years. And the diversity of what it means to build that advanced economy is the diversity of jobs it brings when you create a brand-new industry within your community. So, the diversity that ends up happening when you create brand-new industries will take thirty years ago's semiconductors and Intel moving to Chandler, Arizona. Yes, the Intel plant had mostly high-wage jobs. It was people in bunny suits, working in very controlled environments. But, the secondary jobs for their vendors, which large corporations, as they get larger, require or request of their vendors to be local. So, they say, "You need to come here and do this. You supply my tanks. You supply the wires and the hoses that go from the tanks to the manufacturing floor." That diversity of jobs that comes along with the new industry development is what we're trying to do, to create the jobs in a diversity of skill ranges from real entry level, because, of course, we've said things, and I don't know if you've heard Barry talk about it, but it's part of our visitation strategy, is entry-level jobs. Sacramento region has one of the highest youth unemployment rates in the state of California, one of the top ten in the United States in terms of youth unemployment, which is a travesty for a community with the kinds of opportunities that we think we could have here. So, developing brand-new industries allows for entry-level positions all the way up through the higher-average wages we're targeting to impact our communities better. And then, things like visitation strategies on retail, which is, you know, everyone's first job was, most people's first job was in some sort of a visitation, retail, food, service type of an environment. If we don't have those opportunities for people to get that initial work experience, it's almost impossible to get your next job. So, we're looking at, we do look at that full diversity, and the targets we target are for that long-term diversity.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I see none. Any questions or comments from any member of the public? I see none. John, thank you very much.
Thank you. My pleasure.
This is, we are being asked to, one, receive a presentation, which we've just done, and, two, we're being asked to authorize the county executive officer or designate to execute services agreement. What is the pleasure of the board?
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Good seeing you. All right. Save the best for last. Rob Unholz from Public Works and Facilities, bringing us a re-roofing project out at the DeWitt Campus. Welcome, Rob.
Morning, Chairman Montgomery, members of the board. Rob Unholz, Capital Improvements Manager with Public Works and Facilities. This morning, I'm requesting your board approve plans and specs to re-roof buildings 302 and 303 on F Avenue in the Placer County Government Center. The estimated total project cost is $614,000, including $484,000 for construction and construction contingency. Also authorize the Director of Public Works and Facilities or designate to award and execute a construction contract not to exceed $484,000 upon reviewing concurrence with risk management, County Council, to the lowest responsive responsible bidder, including authority to approve any necessary change orders consistent with the county purchasing manual and the public contract code. Buildings 302 and 303 are two of the buildings that are proposed to remain in service for some time into the future in the new, in the update of the Government Center Master Plan. They're concrete slab floors and offer a lot of utility into the future. I believe they've only been re-roofed once since the county has had ownership of the campus, possibly before that, but we campus, possibly before that, but we, those are things we don't know. They've exceeded their useful lives, the roofs have, and just spending way too much time patching them and fixing them. Many of the improvements to the roofs in 303 were done when it was a minimum security barracks. 302B is currently housing, building, maintenance, and 303, or 302A is a warehouse for procurement services. Building 303 is the temporary emergency homeless shelter. This project will remove the existing built-up roofing to the, down to the original wood decking, replace all damaged, dry-rotted wood, install new decking as required, and new insulation as required for proper drainage. Apply a new TPA PVC heat seam to roof, which meets Energy Star and California Title 24 energy requirements, our standards, as well as Cool Roof Rated Council standards. The project will provide proper drainage gutters, rainwater leaders, and roofing accessories as required. Construction's expected to start in late August and continue through September. This time, I'd request that your board approve and authorize the actions requested, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Supervisor Huler.
Yeah, just curious, pardon me, if we took the occasion of putting on a new roof to evaluate whether or not any of these facilities would be suitable for solar installation for those.
All of those flat roofs are suitable for solar installation. We haven't included in this any infrastructure as in conduit at this point. Those penetrations would be easy to do in the future through a TPA roof.
I'm more curious to see whether or not we did any meter analysis to see, based on our consumption, does it make sense for us to do any kind of solar?
Not on these two facilities, no. We can certainly look into that.
Yeah, I mean, if...
Sure.
That is a very quick, easy exercise, to see whether or not it's suitable, and therefore, augmenting the contract to include conduit and all the rest, if they are suitable, might make sense at that point.
The department is, well, the division is, working on evaluating our opportunities for PVs throughout the campus.
Yeah, I'm just, anytime you're going to put on a new roof, it's a great opportunity to take a look at that.
Agreed.
Those are two meters.
As we do 301...
In one day's time, so somebody could analyze it in one day's time, and be able to tell you that those make sense.
We'll take a look at it. As we do 301 for the Elections Warehouse, we'll be re-roofing that as well.
Absolutely. Supervisor Wagan.
Just curious, as to the total square footage, Rob, do you know?
Those are about 5,000 per side of the corridor, so there's about 20,000 square feet in there.
Supervisor Holmes.
Yes, Rob. We're being asked to renew the roof on the building that houses the temporary emergency shelter. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Do you think that roof will last for the next 22 years?
Yes. And that, you know, that'll serve whatever function may or may not be in that building in the future.
Thank you. I see no other questions. Any member of the public have any comments on this? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of the board?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We are now going to move to closed session. I'm going to ask Jerry Carden, our County Council, to take us away.
The board will now adjourn to closed session to discuss the four existing litigation matters listed on Page 3 of the agenda.
How long do you think it will take? 15 minutes?
The board has returned from a conference with legal counsel to discuss four litigation matters on the agenda. In Fireman's Fund versus County of Placer, and Woods-Leinberger versus County of Placer, the board heard a report and gave direction to counsel. In Ryan Baske versus County of Placer, the board heard a report and gave direction to counsel. In the estate of Bobby Clifford versus Placer County, the board heard a report and authorized the retention of Angelo Kilday and Kilduff to represent the deputy in that matter. And in the final case, Karen Bjork versus County of Placer, the board heard a report and authorized the retention of Porter Scott in the litigation. That concludes the closed session report.
Having completed all business, we stand adjourned at 10:30, 5:00 AM.